Mr. Hutton, can you introduce the role hall please?
Thank you, Mr. Ward, Mayor Frisco. Mayor Campbell.
Here.
Mayor Eadie.
Here.
Ward Nemo.
Present.
Reeve Green. Reeve Lance.
Here.
Mayor Murphy.
Here.
Mayor Ravishaw.
Here.
Reeve Rouspel.
Present.
Mayor Shulas.
Lieutenant Diesel.
Reeve Stack.
Here.
Reeve Stewart.
Present.
Mayor Sweet.
Present.
Mayor Thompson.
For absolutely the final time, I'm here.
Mayor Vesneski Moore.
I'm here too.
Mayor Wexworth.
Present.
Mayor Wilson.
Present.
Thank you. Disclosure to your interests and the general nature thereof. Seeing them will move forward. Adoption of the minutes of county council session dated October 29th, 2014. On the website, Mayor Vesneski Moore, Second Mayor Sweet, discussion. All those in favor? Paul Gronis, Kerry, thank yous.
Members of county council. During the month of November, I attended six full days and thirteen half-days on county business. On November 1st, I participated in the Five for Fighting Run and Walk in Renfrew to raise awareness for the fight against men's cancer. The event was initiated in the spirit of November to encourage men to be responsible for not only their regular fitness, but also their health with an emphasis on prostate cancer awareness and self-examination. I also shaved off my mustache following the October 29th county council meeting for the official kickoff for November. On November 4th, I continued the taping of up-to-date segments with Coach Co. This month's topics were safe winter driving, the announcement of the county Renfrew tagline, and November. On November 14th, I attended the nightway kickoff at the Canadian Computer Laboratory in John River. On November 19th, I attended a broad greetings to the participants at the National Housing Day event in Renfrew. This is a celebration of the National Housing Day to network and take part in discussions on best practices, challenges, and supports related to people, community, and affordable housing, and to raise awareness and to build partnerships. On November 18th, I along with County Forester Lacy Rose, met the Honorable Bill Morrell, Minister of Natural Resources and Forestry, and the Ontario Forest Industry Association. At the end of the meeting, it was clear that the county of Renfrew will need to continue to raise concerns with respect to the forest industry and the implications with endangered species in that. On November 20th, I attended the youth entrepreneurship program event held at the West Western in Pembroke, hosted by Renfrew County and Future Predator Canada. On November 21st, I attended along with Mayor Bob Sweet and CAO Jim Hutton at Economic Development Strategy held in Kingston. This event was sponsored by Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus and Eastern Ontario Regional Network, as well as the Eastern Ontario Mayors Committee to move forward the new Ontario Economic Development Strategy for the region. You'll be hearing more about that in February. On November 25th, I attended a broad greetings at an event celebrating the family children's services forty years of adult protective services in Renfrew County. Developmental Services have been providing case management and advocacy services to adults with developmental disabilities for forty years in Renfrew County. On November 28th, I'll be attending a meeting at the Publican Area Airport to discuss the future of the airport and the impact to the community. The Lumex group of Peterborough has been hired to complete an economic impact study for the airport. This process was recommended by Fed Dev of the Ontario Indigenousical Council of Kingston. This concludes my address for this session of county council. Hopefully, I'll get everybody to first glance. I'd like to welcome Mayor-elect Terry Miller, Mayor-elect, sorry, Reeve-elect Terry, Mayor-elect Jim Gibson, Mayor-elect Jed Reimel, Mayor-elect Bob Kingsbury, Reeve-elect Deb Robinson, and Reeve-elect Gary Gruntz, Mayor-elect Ken Love. I think I've got everybody. Okay, thank you. I feel sort of like the Speaker of the House at the House of Commons, the very first day after, after a nice one, everybody shows up, you have to study all the pictures. With that, Mr. Boland, do you'd like to introduce this delegation, please?
Thank you, Ward Nemo. Good morning, good morning, members of council. About two years ago, the Renfrew County Road Supervisors Association embarked on a journey to host the annual AORs trade show, and the success of that trade show was greater than we anticipated, largely due to the support that we had from those of you around this council table and the local municipalities within the county of Renfrew. I've placed on your desk, or I think Rose has placed on your desk this morning, a summary of the proceeds that we realized from the trade show. And just to give you a bit of information, we realized just shy of $56,000 in profits from the trade show that will stay in the local area that have been transferred to the Renfrew County Road Supervisors Association. Very early on, our group decided that we wanted to put that money, whatever amount it might be, back into the community, and we're here to do the first part of that this morning. To give you a bit of a summary, we're in keeping with the AORs vision and value statement of promoting knowledge and pursuing excellence, we're going to be putting $40,500 away for education and directing that to future education. $30,000 of which will be directed to students graduating from high school and moving on to senior levels of education in a public works-related field. $8,000 is going to be kept for training and assistance of training of our membership and municipal employees in the public work sector. And $2,500 is being directed to the Food for Learning Program throughout the schools in Renfrew County. We're also going to be supporting our local hospitals to the tune of $10,000, $2,000 for each of the local hospitals. And the reason we're here this morning is to present checks to our friends at Bonner Sher Manor Foundation and Miramichi Lodge Foundation. What I'd like to do is introduce Chris Kuna Paskey and Jerry Haley and ask them to come forward, as well as Sherry Crone from the Miramichi Lodge Foundation. And Shane is your representative here, so perhaps Shane would come forward on behalf of Bonner Sher Manor Foundation. If I could ask the Chair of Health Committee as well and the Warden to come forward. We do have some checks to present. Make sure I get these the right way. Sherry, if you can hold on to that one. We do actually have checks as well. Shane, if you could take that. Warden, or Mayor Vesneski Moore, if you could step in here. And we're pleased to put this money back into the community and hopefully it will do some good.
Are there further? Oh, more or less this way?
Thank you.
I just want to touch it.
Is that okay?
Can you look in right here? And one more.
I don't think Chris was smiling.
Chris was smiling.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to say a few words?
Just quick.
Thank you very much on behalf of the Miramichi Foundation. We truly appreciate this. Thank you very much.
Mr. Hutton, for the Community Service Awards.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. I'm pleased at this point to announce the winners of the Third Annual Warden's Community Service Awards. The Service Awards were started three years ago. They are to recognize and promote the outstanding efforts by community champions in Renfrew County for their active roles with social responsibility and community contributions. There are three award categories: not-for-profit, business, and individual. We received a number of nominees in all the awards, and they were reviewed by a selection committee, and we're going to make the announcements today. So the first category that we're going to deal with is the not-for-profit category. I just wanted to give you an idea of the criteria that were used in terms of the submissions and evaluation. The criteria are accountability to stakeholders, innovation, sustainability, and enterprise, measuring achievement through appropriate techniques, staff and volunteer development. An extension to that is commitment to retaining, developing, and motivating staff and volunteers. So I'm pleased at this point, after the selection was made, to announce that the not-for-profit category is awarded to the Deep River Ladies Hospital Auxiliary nominated by Mayor Dave Thompson, supported by Hospital CAO Gary Sims. I'm just going to give you a little bit of the achievement, then I'll ask you to come forward, while council will recognize you, and then I'll ask Warden Emo to present the award. The Deep River Ladies Hospital Auxiliary has been in existence for over forty years. They've raised funds for the Deep River and Hospital, Deep River and Area Hospital, District Hospital. They've raised and donated over $1 million to the hospital. They have approximately fifty volunteers. They operate the gift shop inside the hospital, and they operate a thrift store in the community center. So please join me in a round of applause in recognizing the Deep River Ladies Hospital Auxiliary. And I would ask their members to come forward to, yes, their members and their nominee, Mayor Thompson, to come forward and accept the award from Ward Nemo.
Members couldn't join us, but we have our hospital CAO here. Yeah, it's good. Exactly. Right here, yeah.
Say something funny.
Let's get you to this way for a second, gentlemen.
Big smile.
Give that to Gary.
Do you want to say a few words?
I remember.
Let's get you to this way for a second, gentlemen.
Six miles.
Give that to Gary.
Do you want to say a few words?
Thanks, Dave.
I'd just like to say respectfully, the ladies could not be here this morning, so I'm a sad person to fill in for them, but I would like to say in all gratitude to these ladies and gentlemen that serve us, have served us for, actually, it's almost half a century. And what they do for us is incredible, what they do for their community is incredible, and I can't say enough about them, so thank you very much. This will mean a great deal to these ladies, and I will make sure that they get a nice presentation and some photos that go with it. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Gary. The next category for the Warden's Award is the business category. The criteria for that category is involvement in community programs, activities, or services. Community contributions must have been within the past calendar year. Business leadership in a changing economic environment demonstrating creativity, innovation, and entrepreneurial spirit, partnering with public sector and community to enhance community life. I'm pleased to say that the business category for 2014 has been awarded to M. Sullivan &amp; Sons Limited of Armpryor, nominated by employee Gibb Tarangio and Reeve Walter Stack, supported by local historian Doug Shields. M. Sullivan &amp; Sons Limited has been a pillar in Armpryor's economy for over 100 years, making them the oldest family-owned privately-run construction company in Canada. I believe that was celebrated this year, Reeve Stack, 100 years. Recognized of one of Canada's 50 best-managed companies, they've been a major sponsor for local 2014 fundraising events such as Prior Palooza and the White Pine Festival, continued fundraising efforts through their annual golf tournament, provide housing assistance to their employees, help secure new business in Armpryor such as RBC and Rona. County was recipient of $100,000 donation to the Bonner Sher Manor Auditorium project through M. Sullivan &amp; Sons. And of course, the county of Renfrew and many local municipalities have benefited from M. Sullivan &amp; Sons buildings all across the county and Eastern Ontario in effect. So please come forward to accept the award from Warden Emo, M. Sullivan &amp; Sons. Do we have Mr. Tarangio here? Yes, thank you.
He's not here, but I'll step in.
Okay. And Reeve Stack, are you going to come forward?
All right, Rob Ball.
Congratulations, Rob.
Thank you very much.
This is Lori, this is Tommy's youngest.
Thank you very much.
Half a step, everybody, this way.
Half a step.
Looking right here, doing your best. And one more. Perfect.
Get one over this way.
Oh, he has lost.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for the award, Ward Nemo. And to the mayors and wardens and everyone here, thank you very much. I'm Rob Ball, I'm the President and CEO of Sullivan's, and I want to take a special thank you to Walter Stack for nominating us, along with Gibb Tarangio. Gibb Tarangio's been with us for 72 years. His son and his grandson worked with the firm. And I think the legacy that Sullivan's has through the Valley over the last hundred years speaks to the fact that we have three generations working for our company, and this goes on throughout the Valley. I think our partnership with the Valley has been tremendously successful for us as a company, and I think we'd like to say to you all, thank you for allowing us to be part of the Valley, the community. We've done a lot of jobs for different people around, we've worked for a lot of owners within the Valley, and we like to give back as much as we can, because this is where we live, and this is home for us, and it's important to us to build up the communities that we live in. I just want to give a shout-out to Lori Van Wyk. Lori runs our store, the Rona in Armpryor, and Lori is Tommy Sullivan's youngest daughter. Lori is a great legacy for us, and she continues, she's fourth generation. Lori's son Andrew is now with the firm, he's fifth generation. Many say that family-owned companies can't make it that long, but so far, knock on wood, we've hung in there. And just a note, Tommy Sullivan, who you all know, was the Mayor of Armpryor, sat in this room, I'm sure, many times, and was a huge proponent of the Valley. And I think in his honor, I'd like to accept this reward on behalf, award on behalf of M. Sullivan's son, and to all of you for all your hard work, say thank you.
The third category is the individual category, and the criteria for that category is contribution that the individual made to the county, including specific projects that they have worked on when the contribution was initiated and completed, letters of support, and any additional relevant material. I'm pleased to say that the recipient of the individual Warden's Award this year is Daryl Ryan, nominated by George Hodgkinson, councillor with the township of the Wrensham Valley, and supported by Lori Armstrong, friend and mentor. In terms of Daryl's submission, the submission on behalf of Daryl, I should say, Daryl has been a long-serving municipal employee who has always been an active volunteer, community leader, and advocate. He's a great champion of both the people and the place that form the community of the county of Renfrew. He and wife Carol are parents to four children. Daryl coached minor hockey and umpired for girls' minor ball, I'm sure he didn't do that as an emperor. He volunteered in many capacities for children and teens' activities and programs, and I know I've seen Daryl numerous Christmases in the mall on behalf of Salvation Army. He served and continues to serve on many boards, including Camp Lutherlin, Family and Children's Services, Renfrew County Community Futures Development Corporation. Daryl is a pleasure to work with, sharing a quick wit, a smile, and a great sense of humor. He has a robust knowledge of traditions and the history of the county of Renfrew, and he's spent personal vacations helping to build a safer community in Guatemala. Under Daryl's leadership at the township of the Wrensham Valley, projects such as Pembroke MDF and Walmart Canadian Tire Commercial Center came to fruition in the Wrensham Valley. So please join me in congratulating Daryl Ryan as he comes forward to accept the individual award from Ward Nemo.
Daryl, your wife should be with you.
Yes.
Go over this way.
And one step this way, everybody. Great. There we are. Looking right here. And one more. Perfect, thank you.
Look from this way.
Sean.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Listening to Jim's testimonials, it reminds me of the story at the funeral where after the eulogy, somebody got up and walked up and peeked in the casket to make sure he was at the right funeral, because he didn't recognize the person they were talking about. The Ottawa Valley has been very good to our family. I hope we're paying some back, and I hope to be able to continue to pay it forward for many years to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hutton. Again, thank you to the Deep River Hospital Women's Auxiliary. Very impressive, over forty years, nearly fifty years' participation in their community and support, raising over a million dollars and having fifty volunteers on their roster. That kind of commitment is very difficult to replicate in that kind of a success. So thank you to them, we really appreciate your efforts in your community, and your example is such a good example for the rest of us as to how we should be contributing as well. To M. Sullivan &amp; Sons, a hundred years of hard work, the amount of building that I go into every day that doesn't have your name on it somewhere across the county, high-quality work, well-respected in the community, easy to work with, delivering quality and value, and then your commitment to your community of Armpryor and the community of Renfrew County as well, is well known by everyone, and so thank you as well for your hundred years and your continued support of our community. Thank you very much. Daryl and Carol, thank you. I'm aware of your involvement with the Christmas program and numerous other things in the community. Again, a very good example for those of us who want to develop our communities and make it better. And yes, you are paying us back in spades, so thank you very much. And again, Mr. Hutton, this is gay for you. We're going to be in a James Performance Parade a little later, folks. Put me through my paces, thank you, Mr. Warden.
Two other presentations regarding our Health and Wellness Committee, and the first is a staff check presentation to Canadian Tire Jump Start. Each year during Healthy Workplace Month, the Health and Wellness Committee plans activities that encourage lifestyle choices related to physical activity, nutrition, and mental health, while incorporating give-back to the community charity events. Money was raised via a hockey show event and the always-popular Denim Day event. This year, the committee has chosen to give proceeds to our local Canadian Tire Jump Start program. I have to say, I missed the hockey shootout, too, by the way, I was really disappointed in that, but unfortunately, I was traveling, so I think, I'm sure I would have won it.
Oh, I don't know about that either, it would have been a senator's.
Mark Wolvan, Regional Manager, North and East Ontario Jump Start Charities, assisted the Wellness Committee immensely with promoting Jump Start throughout the month. He's not able to be with us today, however, Rodina Turner, Assistant Executive Director of our local Boys and Girls Club, is here today to accept a check on behalf of Canadian Tire Jump Start in the amount of $1,148.10 raised for that program by our staff. So I'd ask them to come forward. Bev, if you could please join us as well, and the Warden, and we'll do a check presentation.
I'm the Chair for the Renfrew County Chapter of Jump Start, and I just wanted to just do a brief, just a brief, what Canadian Tire Jump Start's all about. One in three Canadian families cannot afford to enroll their kids in organized sports and physical activity, which means many kids are missing out on the benefits that come with organized play. Canadian Tire Jump Start is a nationally-registered charity dedicated to providing financial support to children that would not otherwise have an opportunity to participate in organized sport and recreation. Since the inception of Canadian Tire's Jump Start chapter in Renfrew County in 2005, the funding has helped over 6,000 area children get in the game with a total investment of over $480,000. Canadian Tire Jump Start has supported over forty different types of healthy sport and activity, including soccer, hockey, dance, martial We're going to be in a James Performance Parade a little later, folks.
Put me through my paces, thank you, Mr. Warden. Two other presentations regarding our Health and Wellness Committee, and the first is a staff check presentation to Canadian Tire Jump Start. Each year during Healthy Workplace Month, the Health and Wellness Committee plans activities that encourage lifestyle choices related to physical activity, nutrition, and mental health, while incorporating give-back to the community charity events. Money was raised via a hockey show event and the always-popular Denim Day event. This year, the committee has chosen to give proceeds to our local Canadian Tire Jump Start program. I have to say, I missed the hockey shootout, too, by the way, I was really disappointed in that, but unfortunately, I was traveling, so I think, I'm sure I would have won it. Oh, I don't know about that, Peter, it would have been a senator's.
I'm the chair for the Renfrew County Chapter of Jump Start, and I just wanted to just
Mark Wolvan, Regional Manager, North and East Ontario Jump Start Charities, assisted the Wellness Committee immensely with promoting Jump Start throughout the month. He's not able to be with us today, however, Rodina Turner, Assistant Executive Director
do a brief, just a brief what Canadian Tire Jump Start's all about.
of our local Boys and Girls Club, is here today to accept a cheque on behalf of Canadian
One in three Canadian families cannot afford to enroll their kids in organized sports
Tire Jump Start, in the amount of $1,148.10 raised for that program by our staff.
and physical activity, which means many kids are missing out on the benefits that come with organized play.
So I'd ask them to come forward, Bev, if you could please join us as well, and the
Canadian Tire Jump Start is a nationally-registered charity dedicated to providing financial
warden, and we'll do a cheque presentation.
support to children that would not otherwise have an opportunity to participate in organized sport and recreation. Since the inception of Canadian Tire's Jump Start Chapter in Renfrew County in 2005, the funding has helped over 6,000 area children get in the game, with a total investment of over $480,000. Canadian Tire Jump Start has supported over forty different types of healthy sport and activity, including soccer, hockey, dance, martial arts, swimming, gymnastics, among many others. On behalf of the Canadian Jump Start Chapters, we would like to thank you guys very much for your donation.
Thank you very much, Rodina. The second presentation related to the Health and Wellness Committee is the presentation of the Wellness Challenge Cup here at the County of Renfrew, this being the fourth year. The County of Renfrew Healthy Workplace Month has been happening annually, and this is the fourth year for the Wellness Cup Challenge Competition. On behalf of the Corporate Health and Wellness Committee, I'm pleased to announce this year's winner is, Bev has in here hands down, I don't know, I guess Public Works with ninety-two percent, just barely beat, I'm sure, somebody else, so, of their staff submitting their passport to wellness. This year's Health and Wellness Challenge Events included promotion of fitness via the Twelve Days of Fitness Program, promotion of nutrition via Pick It or Kick It, whereby staff were encouraged to kick the burger, fries, and pop combo, instead pick solid fruit and water combo, employee information sessions promoting mental health, promotion of our Partners for Life program with Canadian Blood Services, blood typing opportunity for staff. Each department was encouraged to create their own events, this is where Public Works came through. Public Works organized a fitness event that involved cans of food for weights, and then donated the food to our local food bank. On Halloween, Public Works organized a potluck of tasty, healthy alternatives to the traditional calorie-filled Halloween treats. Hats off to Steve Boland and his Public Works team, and congratulations on winning the Wellness Cup this year. And if you come forward, I'll ask the warden to present the cup to Public Works, Steve Boland. Any other, is there any other staff at Public, are there any staff? Bev, Mike, come on in, and we'll award the cup, please. work hard on this every year, they have twelve members on that committee, representatives from all departments across the county. And I have to say, it's been this year and the last couple of years, I've seen employees, rather than take a fifteen-minute coffee break, they'll go out and walk around the track, and it's been, it's actually, it's really good to see that they're getting into it, and are trying to get healthy, I guess. So thanks very much to Bev and all the committee on your efforts for that, and thanks to our electeds for their support. Thanks, Mr. Warden.
Thank you, and to our employees, those last two presentations, the cheque presentation and the Wellness Cup, speaks to your efforts to really be involved with the community, and also at the same time raise awareness, because I know Bev, every time I meet her in the hallway, has a new idea that is quite startling in its simplicity and ability to engage people. And she's a very energetic, as well as her staff, energetic proponent of this, and to them, thank you, and to all of the staff, thank you for taking your time to do this, it's not easy within your private workday to involve yourself in your community, and we really appreciate you doing that, and we appreciate your generosity to the rest of our community as well. So thank you to staff for this. With your permission, council, we've changed things up a little bit, and we're going to move up item number sixteen, presentation to appoint councillors, Warden, myself, and C L J, Jim Hutton will be involved in this. And Rose, you're going to start us off, I think? Rayanne couldn't be here today, but she has been with us since 2000, and I've known her for a long time. The first time I met her, she gave me a verbal look in there at a public meeting, I had the, and asked me, she often asks a question unprepared, so Rayanne, you paid for that, and I still remember those lessons to this day, and we laugh about it, but she demolished in diapers and he was in his forties. I've served on every number of community committees in the Renfrew area with Don, and me quite handily, so I've got a healthy respect for her, also in getting here to County Council with her knowledge of finance and strategy, it's been invaluable to all of us. again, someone who's always very well-prepared, and willing to tear apart any, and this is So thank you to her, and go make sure that she gets her plaque. a positive comment, any ideas that come forward and make sure that they're fully understood Mayor Campbell, again, Mary and I were seatmates for a while, I spoke a little bit about this by everybody, and that it's achievable. And, you know, inspirationally a great leader, and someone who I've looked up to for many last night. Mary's always very well-prepared, and very willing to search comments and discussion years, and, you know, I hope to give him lots of easy committees in Renfrew. points, and someone who keeps, keeps a person like myself grounded by asking pretty simple So Don, if you can come up, please. Reeve Green couldn't be here today, she was attending to some personal business, we questions, others don't, who don't pay for it, which is always appreciated as well. Always counted on Mary Toledo Canada with her beautiful voice, and I think that's probably believe, out of the province, she was away traveling, and appears to have not been back one of the biggest memories we're all going to have, so thank you, Mary. just yet. Aubrey, again, is someone who I've known for a long time, served on any number of And if you want to come up, please, we'll give you a token of our appreciation. committees within the, within the Renfrew area, and one of the first ones was in the late eighties when we served on recycling and waste management, waste management study, which resulted in Aubrey showing a lot of leadership for the town at that point in our community by standing up, and helping them develop their business plan, so they were able to develop services. And so we're very fortunate to have her take that lead role at the time. Again, a number of presentations over the years, for federal and provincial dollars, Aubrey and I attended together, and always very directed her method of delivering a message to the province, and to the feds, and again, to those chambers, so we're very thankful for the leadership and the energy and the time that Aubrey has given us in her years here, and we'll make sure that she gets her plaque. Reeve Lance, always a pleasure to sit and have a chat with Norm, very insightful, got a great sense of humor, understated, and he doesn't advertise it enough. He, and he has a very gentle way of telling you you're wrong, and so I certainly appreciated that when I, when I came to these chambers, because on occasion, you'd be so intent on getting your message out, that you weren't sure, that it often wasn't clearly understood, and Norm helped to be straightening that stuff out on a regular basis by asking me a question or making a suggestion about something else. So Norm, thank you very much for all your, all your time here and in your community, we certainly appreciate it. I know I've really benefited from my time spent with you, so thank you. If you want to come up, we'll give you the plaque, Norm. And Dick Bradshaw, again, I didn't know Dick when he first came here, I knew him because we chatted a few times at the Rye Public Meetings, and I mentioned this when I was up in Wrensham Hills. It's a very small community, and you spend a lot of time on the road at various committee meetings or public functions of mutual interest, so I had known, and sat beside Dick a few times in meetings and exchanged information, and so I knew who he was, and, you know, he's got an awesome sense of humor. I said this at the Wrensham Hills the other night, where, you know, I'm not sure what it is in the water, or whether it's part of the mayor's job description, where you have to win a couple of rounds of comedy club or something, become mayor, because first of all, there's Mr. Gutzman, who was quite an accomplished comedian, and now, you know, we have Dick, and now we have Jed, so all with a delicious sense of humor. Dick was a real pleasure to work with, a very calm person in committee, in public, and always making a strategic comment or intervention at any point during the discussion, when sometimes we go off the rails, or we may stray a little bit, and bring it back to where we needed to be. So Dick, I know I certainly depended on you for your wise counsel, and thank you very much for your time with us. Dick and I were having a laugh, because he's got his blue jacket on, I had mine on this morning, and our ties are almost the same, we have a bad habit of dressing, they're quite similar without knowing it, so we've enjoyed that. Mayor Rathwell, and former Mayor Rathwell, Reeve Rathwell, former warden. Don, again, is someone who I met, again, in the eighties, while you were around putting together recycling, waste management. I'd known Don for years before that as well, over numerous community events. Again, someone who's been very impressive with his work, his effort on behalf of his community and the County of Renfrew, has a very understated style, it's based on tact, diplomacy, a sense of humor, and not worrying about who gives credit for good ideas and achieving results. That's certainly been an example for everyone here, Don, and I know your community, so thank you. Dick is, probably, and I'm not meaning to disrespect anybody in the room, but probably the most enthusiastic supporter of this whole community of all of us, and probably of all time. There was in a conference I went to, where I didn't see Madawaska Valley Buttons handed out by David, and there might be fifteen hundred people at FCM wearing a Madawaska Valley button by the end of the day, or a pamphlet stuck in somebody's pocket, or his business card, or, or you mentioned you were from greater Madawaska, and they said, "Oh, who gave you Shoeless?" Well, we're two separate divisions of Hollywood, but yes, I do. So he was always on the hunt to promote his community here and outside of, these chambers outside of the County of Renfrew, and has brought considerable acclaim to his community internationally, and has been very strategic and sustained out of David's part. And David, we certainly appreciate your energy, your ideas, and your enthusiasm, so thank you, David. Reeve Stewart, Reeve Stewart came to us here at the same time as myself and Mayor Campbell, so it was quite a, quite a time for us, was a seatmate in essence between them, and we had a similar sense of humor, and Mayor Rathwell was always bringing something behind us, which usually had the three of us in stitches. Tammy is very direct in her approach about things, if she sees something, she reaches out and grabs it, or she asks a question about it, or tries to understand it, or tries to explain it in very detail. A very step-tast and loyal person to whatever community she was working on, she worked very hard to make sure that the benefits for the community were apparent to her community and all other communities equally. And so we certainly, we certainly appreciate that, I really miss your sense of humor, and some of the stories that we told were always interesting, so Tammy, thank you very much for being with here and the health unit as well. Tammy reminded me of a story I had to share, and poor Don, poor Don Rathwell and Jim Hutton, we see, they go, "Oh, Tammy had just given birth," and so we went to Kings, or Windsor, I guess, we're having dinner, and I had great fun with them by saying, "Well, you know, with the new laws in Ontario, there has to be a change room and a breastfeeding room, and so what's County House going to do with that?" And so it was quite fun watching these two gentlemen squirm, first of all, Jim trying to find the law, and Blackberry and Don trying to answer, so I shared that with Tammy, two of our supporters. Mayor Thompson, Mayor Thompson was a teacher to me a long time ago, you may not know this, I went to one of the courses he taught at Alaskan College on starting a small business in the mid-nineties, and so that was my first exposure to David. He impressed me at that point, because we're the same age, and he's much more accomplished than I am, so I was impressed at that point, and that hasn't changed, actually. I enjoy talking to David, he has a refreshing take on things that I often don't consider, and most of us don't, a delightful sense of humor, and very, very strategic in his comments and interventions. I know that I could have really depended upon him, as well as the ACL local committee, for his global knowledge about ACL, now CNL, and his community and the interaction, and also some very good advice on who to approach next, next steps that we're considering, how we're going to do that. So David, thank you very much for your, your time and your assistance and your knowledge and your friendship. It was a seatmate, in essence, between them, and we had a similar sense of humor, and Mayor Rattworth would always bring something behind us, which usually had the three of us in stitches. Tammy is very direct in her approach about things. If she sees something, she reaches out and grabs it, or she asks a question about it, or tries to understand it, or tries to explain it in great detail. A very step-tast and loyal person to whatever community she was working on. She worked very hard to make sure that the benefits for the community were apparent to her community and all other communities equally. And so we certainly appreciate that. I really miss your sense of humor, and some of the stories that we told were always interesting. So Tammy, thank you very much for being with here and being helpful in it as well. Tammy reminded me of a story I have to share. And poor Don, poor Don Rattwell and Jim Hutton, when we see it, oh, Tammy had just given birth, and so we went to Windsor, I guess. We're having dinner, and I had great fun with them by saying, "Well, you know, with the new laws in Ontario, there has to be a change room and a breastfeeding room, and so what's County Council going to do with that?" And so it was quite fun watching these two gentlemen squirm. First of all, Jim trying to find the law on the BlackBerry, and Don trying to answer. So I shared that with Tammy, too, out of sorts. Mayor Thompson. Mayor Thompson was a teacher to me a long time ago. You may not know this. I went to one of the courses he taught at Alaskan College on starting a small business in the mid-nineties, and so that was my first exposure to David. He impressed me at that point, because we're the same age, and he's much more accomplished than I am, so I was impressed at that point. And that hasn't changed, actually. I enjoy talking to David. He has a refreshing take on things that I often don't consider, and most of us don't. A delightful sense of humor and very strategic in his comments and interventions. I know that I could have really depended upon him, as well as the ACL local committee, for his global knowledge about ACL, now CNL, and his community and the interaction, and also some very good advice on who to approach next steps that we're considering. So David, thank you very much for your time and your assistance and your knowledge and your friendship. Mayor Mayor Rattworth. Harold, having sat in front of him for a number of years, we certainly enjoyed any number of quiet laughs and at lunch, lots of conversation and ideas exchanged by days and anyone speaking with the rest of the members. You know, we certainly appreciated your comments and interventions whenever you raised an issue, which was usually concerning money and service and good value for the monies being invested and spent, as well as asking some pretty pointed questions about what was next and how we're going to assess it or how we're going to report it. And so I know that everybody here really appreciated that, and I certainly appreciate the relaxed retirement look, Harold, with the full beard. And so if you could come up there, we'll give you a plaque as our appreciation. Mayor Wilson. Since eighteen ninety-three? Oh, sorry, I just lost it. Jack has been a role model to me for a number of years, a good friend and advisor. One of the first things he told me was, "When you come in here, make sure you wear a tie. Don't be wearing shorts and a dull shirt." A bit of advice, probably needed, because I think he saw me standing there one day. But again, you know, served as institutional memory in a lot of instances and always brought a touch of realism. Sometimes you can get too tied up in putting together policy or putting together a really good idea, and Jack was able to cut through that and make a pretty pointed statement, which grounded you in the reality of delivering service, making sure it's affordable, and making sure it's the right thing. And sometimes we have to make decisions that are the right thing but don't fit the overall strategy. And I know I certainly appreciated that, Jack, and I know everybody else here did as well, so thank you very much for your time.
The warden mentioned the smarting the maple leafs. We all know they like the Titanic as soon as they hit the ice to go down.
The community awards today and the plaques given to county councilors were made by the last steward of our empire. They're again an ongoing support bar, show of our support for the forestry industry. They're local wood, locally produced, and we're very proud to be associated with Mr. Stewart and to offer these to the community and to our county council members. And if... They would, eh?
Yeah, they've been whispering at me through everyone's voice.
Okay, all right. Break it. Okay, so what we'll do is we'll take a couple of seconds and we'll do a group photo. And when we come back, I'd ask the members who received the plaque now, if they have a couple of seconds, if they want to say a few words. So we'll... Would you like to assemble right here in front? Okay, thank you. Okay, if we could reconvene, please. And I apologize, the light was off here and I misread... Mr. Stewart actually lives in Wawa, in Arapahoe, so I misread that.
McDamperes, huh?
McDamperes, yes, yes. And by amazing coincidence, she used to be the home of Candy Homer, where I lived as a struggling teen. And on behalf of county council and staff and our residents, I'd like to leave in a round of applause for our members. Would some of the members like to make some comment? Mayor Wilson?
Yeah, I would. I guess I've been around here a long time, but I am going to miss it. You know, I've been here for thirty-two years and... But I think it was time for me to go. I've been around a long time, and I have a good council at home, so I'll be back, sitting in the back, and some of the meetings, pass some of my time, I guess. I just say to those that are going to hear in the future, keep up the good work. We've got one of the best counties in the province of Ontario. Just keep up there, and you'll find out when you're sitting here, you're not dealing with a handful of people in your own community. You've got the hundred and eighty-eight thousand eyes looking at you, so you better be on the ball.
Thank you, Jeff. Dick Rattichaw.
I just want to say thank you. It's for four years sitting at county council. It's been enjoyable. I've learned a lot, and I can go back to our community. Team here is unreal, not only with the seventeen, the total seventeen there, but the staff have taken that, and I've learned a lot, so I want to thank you very much for your time for allowing me to be here for four years. Thank you.
Reeve Rattichaw. Or Reeve Rattwell. Chief of Staff, again.
Thank you, warden. Yeah, I've been up here now ten years at the county, and I would like to thank the people that helped me, particularly the two years of warden, or liked me as warden, and the help I was getting from the directors and the staff. Every time there was something to do or projects to take on, they were always there just for support and ideas. And this council staff up here is one of the best staff that we did want to work with. Everybody is so cooperative and trying to help one another. I would particularly like to thank the two CEOs that worked with me when I was warden, and that was Norm Leckie and Jim Hutton. And those two gentlemen certainly were beside me all the time and gave me and helped me in the two years that I had. A bit of success was a lot of credit to those gentlemen. The other third member in that was Jim Kutske, the treasurer. Jim, we were able to get the... Get some work done on finance. We were able to get the budget backed up to an earlier date, which I started when I first came up here, and Jim and I worked closely together on so many things, particularly on the warden. So once again, thank you all, and thank you, people, the new members of council that I've worked with. You were so generous to help me. Thank you, all of you.
Mayor Eadie.
Yes, thank you very much, Warden. This has been a great experience for me, having the past four years here. Certainly, I've learned an awful lot, and I think it's going to help me in my future. Much, much appreciated. The staff at this county level are second to none, I would say, in all of Ontario. Sixteen other people sitting at this table. I feel I've made sixteen friends, and the knowledge I've got from them people, the advice I've got from these people is unbelievable, and this has been one of the best four years of all my life when it comes to, as you say, education and knowledge, and I think it's made me a better, much better person. I would say one thing, though, about our warden. We did have a meeting last night, just a get-together. It wasn't a meeting, it was a get-together of council, and he was a few minutes late. In Ranford, there's like sixteen committees, and before he arrived, we decided that he would be chair of nine and sub-chair of eight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You don't expect much progress, do you? Mayor Shoeless.
Yes, excuse me, Mr. Warden. What a journey. I've been blessed, four years to serve my municipal town to the Madawaska Valley, the greatest municipal valley all of Ranford County. But I do want to say something, is sitting at this chair and representing all of Ranford County, never sat around with so many professional people as reeves and mayors and also staff. Thank you very much for the wonderful four years.
Mayor Campbell, did I see your hand? No, no. Okay, sorry. Mayor Rattworth?
Thank you, warden. Seeing I'm not going to be around to keep an eye on the spending, and like I said, I'm hoping for you and your staff to continue with their great work and inform us out in the rural area. I remember when I came in, it was certainly in Tucker Fair, that's what it's going to be, and now you're under the leadership of Mayor Warren, Mr. Warren, and Jack Wilson, Janice, Audrey, and there are many other ones here. Veteran sort of, I was under their guidance, and the staff were pretty impressive, and they talked us out of their news about different issues. It's been great working with you all, and I wish you all the best in the future. Thank you.
Reeve Stewart, please.
You're sitting looking like you're waiting for a bomb up here.
Can we laugh about it?
All right, well, I'll keep it short then. I'd like to thank everyone around these tables for all the years we've spent together. Hopefully, it was fun for you as it was for me, because you might as well have some fun at this place. To the staff, I appreciate everything that you've ever done for me and helped me, and when I had questions, and tried to keep you in line, which didn't always work. And I'm going to miss each and every one of you. Seventeen years at this game is kind of hard to walk away from, but life goes on, and I'll be watching these all in the future. And Mike, especially you, I want to see that ring toss game. I'm going to be checking for that. I want to see those colors up in my end, and you know, I still got you on speed dial, so thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hutton.
Just in terms of the agenda for your business.
Our correspondence.
Thank you. It's usually Peter that goes by that and not me, but in terms of your correspondence, all correspondence help me stand today by our community. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you. And we'll move to finance and admin, and I believe Mayor Wilson's going to present that report.
I do, sir, warden. Finance. Members of county council, we have finance and committee directives as follows. Information, item number one, council renumberation. Number two is the treasurer's report. Number three is the ride group. Number four is the finance indicator. Number five is the Ontario Managed partnership fund. Number six is the Ontario Community Infrastructure Fund. Number seven is the P O A report. And number eight is the power NAM special payment program, which they've been working on here in the county for a few months. Number nine is the labor and employment legislation bill. Number eight is eighteen, and bill is... B is twenty-one. Number ten is the accessibility advisory. Number eleven is the two thousand fifteen United Way launch. Number twelve is the grant, and the number of municipalities have received some there. And number thirteen is the documentary council videos, which will take the place of these chambers. Number fourteen is Bill Number Eight. Under resolutions, asset management plan, have a resolution, FACC fourteen eleven one twenty, move by the chair second by committee, county council. County council approved the County of Ranford Asset Management Plan at this session of county council. Bylaw is entitled. Employe bylaw number one, resolution, FACC fourteen eleven dash one twenty-two, move by the chair second by the committee. The county council approved the increased meal allowance in Mary's Bay three. Other allowances, two meals, gratitudes, and incidentals. Present the employe bylaw number... Bylaw number one, sixty-five dollars to seventy-five dollars effective January first two thousand and fifteen. Further, the revised employment bylaw number one to be adopted this session of county council. Number seventeen is the renumberation bylaw, and that is the procedure to put in place for the municipalities for council for the next four years. Resolution number, FACC fourteen eleven one twenty-four, move by the chair second by committee. County council adopt a revised bylaw to provide the renumberation for members of county councils to the County of Ranford at this session of county council, all of which was respected by Chair Ryan Briscoe, Eadie, Ewan, Rattwell, Stagg, Sweet, the guests, and Mayor Wilson.
Thank you. And council, questions, comments concerned with item number one? Item two? Three? Four? Five? Item six? Item seven? Item eight? Item nine? Ten? Eleven? Twelve? Thirteen? Fourteen? Fifteen? Sixteen? And seventeen. Report as a whole. Mover? You've heard the discussion? All who's in favor? None is carried. Thank you, council. And with that, Reeve's staff, operations, please.
Thank you, warden. These operations, if any, this report recommend is follows. Information, number one is the Building Canada Fund, Small Communities Fund, and the... There was a negative response to a submission there, but we might know the DOCIF fund, we've been moved ahead on the mudling road project to the second stage of submittal for that. Number two is an active transportation update, and it's just a summary of, today we've done about ninety-two kilometers of active transportation road surfacing, and it's costing over one point seven million. Number three is a detailed report on the scratch program, it's worth looking at if you haven't had time to do it yet. The departmental variance administration should still be under about seventeen thousand. The operations, thirty-five thousand dollars. The capital works program, again, is going to be, says seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand under spent there, and it's, we've had a real up and down this summer with some of our projects. And to note that the Dunn Street project in Barry's Bay won't be completed this fall, so there's additional hundred and sixty thousand dollars we're out of good reserve that will be spent in the spring on Dunn Street to complete that project. We have had Steve and I and the committee, and Steve with the staff, have lengthy...
We have had Steve and I and committee, and Steve with the staff, have lengthy discussions about the process and how we will deal with our consultants in terms of trying to tighten up the quoting process. The staff have done an excellent job in terms of getting out there real early in the season, hence getting some real good pricing. So the surplus has grown over the year, largely based on that. But we want to look at how tight we can bring those dollars into perspective. You know, in my view, I think we're in a very safe position that operations is running a surplus through the year of maybe two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, because there's always the other side of the coin where projects run into higher costs than what's normal. The last couple of years, we've had significant surpluses, and we don't want to be taxing unnecessarily. So we have, Steve is going to be talking to the consultants that we use, the engineering groups, to see that we can tighten up on our quoting process as much as possible, and try to bring a little bit more prediction into that. Number five is a purchase plan for County Road sixty-six, Wildal. The resolution is number OP-CC-14-11-97. Moved by Chair and second by committee, that a bylaw be passed authorizing the purchase of parts two, three, four, six, and seven on reference plan forty-nine, err, dash one-eight four zero four from opponents of Henry Kula, if I'm pronouncing that right, for the sum of five hundred dollars, and that these persons will be dedicated as part of the public highway on registration and transfer documents. Six is winter maintenance agreements that are in place with the municipalities. We have resolution number OP-CC-14-11-98. Moved by Chair and second committee, that the bylaws be passed authorize Warden and the perk to execute the winter maintenance agreements with the town of Renford, Deep River and the town of Renford. And we do have an addendum, should be on your desk here, which is the Ontario Community Infrastructure Fund formula-based component, and it's been put in place for the next three years, which we hope is maybe the beginning of the promise, looking at some sustainable funding for the infrastructure of our municipalities. The county's been awarded three hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred and six dollars, and we have a resolution on that as well, number OP-CC-14-11-101. Moved by Chair and second by committee, that a bylaw be passed to authorize the county of Renford to enter into an agreement with Minister of Agriculture, Food, and Rural Affairs for the Ontario Community Infrastructure Fund formula-based component, and that the Warden and perk be authorized to execute the agreement on behalf of the community. All of which is respectfully submitted by staff, by Chair, committee members, Eman, Lenz, Murphy, Lentz, Shulis, and Whitaker. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments, questions, concerns from council on item number one? Item two? Mayor Whitaker, sorry.
Thank you, Warden. Item two. I've always been second in terms of, second thoughts about paying shoulders and other things, transportation, which is almost a half a million dollars per year. And we're looking about this year at seventeen thousand, eleven, and probably four percent of that. I understand it's down to one, but I just feel we have to cut back on some of these costs. And taxpayers are in for a while here, you know, they're not going to be complaining anymore, but they have it in the past. And I don't know where it's going to stop, but I just think we have to cut back a bit on some of these, in my opinion, unnecessary expenses.
Okay, thank you. Item number three? Item four? Item five? Item number six? The addendum? Mover, please. So move. Thank you. There's a motion, you've heard the motion, and the report, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None is carried. Thank you, council. And Mayor Sweet, please, for development property.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, members of county council. We here Development and Property Committee wish to report, and recommend as follows. Number of items under information planning, division activity tracker is under laptops, it's a very big report this month because of a document as far as the architectural initiative is concerned. But you can see that the services are up, applications are up over last year, and you know, there seems to be a slowing down in the building initiative for the county of Renford. The Ride Highlands Motorcycle Tour Maps are available, and this is becoming quite a positive initiative for tourism in the county of Renford. The road map is out also for the O.P.T.A. Pleased to welcome Anthony Hobbs, he is a successful applicant for the new forestry and trails technician position, and we see where some of his first priorities will be, and that is to assist the current forester in preparation of the 2015 forest operations. K and P funding, we had a meeting just last Thursday, I believe it was, in Attunston Bromley, and you can see there, there was an application that was applied for, and we were successful in acquiring a twenty thousand dollar grant. That will be matched in the funding coming forward as a budget item next year, and you can see where it's going to be spent, signage, tree removal, bridges, deck, and grid, and all that sort of stuff. At that particular time, I also did an update to that group on the K and P, the CP rail line, and there's a number of municipalities that I'll be traveling to next year, to give them update and overview of where we're going with the CP rail line. And it's a large body of work, and to keep everybody in the loop, we'll be doing that. So I think later in January, I'm heading to Mayor Wilson's municipality to give them an update and maybe do that as well. So there's a resolution, number DPCC 1411-106, moved by the Chair and second by committee, that county council pass a bylaw authorizing the Warden and Chief Administration Officer to sign an agreement with the National Trails Coalition for funding for the K and P trail. Under item number six, the Drake Two, you'll notice that it all, and we hope it all is enplaged by, hopefully by January, at the very least, at the end of February, and we will be making a presentation to county council with this particular initiative. Pleased to report too, though, that under this particular initiative, the county had budgeted some fifty thousand dollars for that initiative, and as you can see, it came on under budget by approximately twenty-four thousand dollars. Very, very well-used system for planning, other than the county of Renford. When we made the presentation, you've seen the difference within the county from the year 2010 to the now 2014. And I think it's quite interesting to see how the county has changed and evolved as far as growth is concerned. So you see, resolution DPCC 1411-107, moved by Chair, second by committee, the county council pass a bylaw authorizing the Warden and Chief Administration Officer to sign an agreement with the Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry for the DAST Digital Raster Acquisition Project, Greyston Ontario Electric Drive Two, and further the twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars and seven cents for this project we held in reserve until the final product is delivered in 2015. Under item number seven, you see there, the direction was given by way of the resolution of county council to move forward with a request for proposal for agricultural, for the agriculture architectural services for the construction of the new O.P.P. facility in the town of Renford. You see the number of interested companies, some thirty-seven, came to the management deciding, thirteen terms submitted proposals, and three were selected for further review. At the end of the day, you see the company that was chosen, and the resolution there is number DPCC 1411-108. Moved by Chair, second by committee, the county council pass a bylaw authorizing Warden and C.A. to enter into a contract with V.G. Architectural Services for the construction of an Ontario provincial police facility in the town of Renford. So it's moving ahead, and that'll be something moving forward in 2015. All of which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair, committee member Briscoe, Campbell, Eman, Green, Murphy, and Wilson.
Thank you. Comments, questions, concerns from council on item number one? Item two? Item three? Four? Five? Six? Item seven? Report as a whole. Mover, please. So move, Mr. Warden. Thank you. You've heard the motion, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None is carried. Thank you, council. Mayor, is there anything more, please, for health committee?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Members of county council, we here Health Committee wish to report and recommend as follows. Sorry. Number one is the resident population. Number two is the hiring of paramedic staff. Number three is Ebola, the precautions. Four is the fall 2014, medical education. Number five is our D.V.I. program and where they are. Again, great mission, and thank you very much for that. Number six, code-stroke bypass program. Number seven is the paramedicine. Number eight, the economic value of paramedicine programs. Number nine is the paramedic remote patient monitoring system. Number ten is the telemedicine equipment at Mewishy Lodge. And number eleven is a fundraiser for Volture Manor, the Bola Fong. All of which is respectfully submitted as by myself, as Chair, committee members Eman, Lentz, Murphy, Rabashaw, Stewart, and Wilson.
Thank you. Questions, comments, concerns from council on item number one? Item two? Item four? Item five? Item six? Item seven? Item eight? Item nine? Item ten? Item eleven? Report as a whole.
Aye, so move.
Thank you. You've heard the report and the motion, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? None is carried. Thank you. Reed Rathwell, please, for social services.
Thank you, Warden. Before I start the social service report, I'd just like to mention how pleased I was to hear the two are running for Warden again. As you indicated, we've been friends back from the early eighties, and you always, you not only got a degree in social service, you also showed it by the way you always acted and talked about young people, particularly the ones who needed help. And with what's happening in the community, we know the footbags are really busy, so I know the social services, whoever comes on this as the Chair and the committee will continue on under your leadership with the conscience you have for it, that it'll be in good hands. So thank you for that. We here Social Services Committee wish to report and recommend as follows. Under information, the Ontario Works Case Code Statistics, item number one. For 2013, 2014, the monthly Ontario Works Case Code comparisons. And 2013, 2014, monthly works participant comparisons, you can see it gradually is going up. Item number two, the childcare statistics. For 2013, 2014, the childcare fee subsidy statistics comparisons, and they're remaining pretty near the same all the way through. 2013, 2014, integration coordinator statistics comparisons. Item number three, the Renford County Social Housing Register weight list statistics, and it stays similar too, all the way through, pretty well. Item number four is the new Ontario Social Management System under SAM, for short. Item number five, National Housing Day event. Item number six, the amendments to the Ontario Fire Code. Item number seven, resolution for the best tech planner, and we have a resolution for that. Resolution number SSCC 1411-65, moved by the Chair and second by committee, that is approved by the Chief Administrative Officer. County council approves childcare services, hiring a best tech planner, contract, part time seventeen point five hours per week, at a cost of twenty-six thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars per year, utilizing the hundred percent provincial early child funding. Item number eight is Healthy Kids Community Challenge Project. And you'll see there, we received the one million, one hundred thousand dollars, and I would like to thank the director and Mrs. Mulville, and the other people that worked on this to get this fund in, because it's certainly going to help over the next three years. Resolution number SSCC 1411-66, moved by the Chair and second by committee, that is approved by the Chief Administrative Officer. County council approves childcare services, hiring a Healthy Kids Community Challenge Project Coordinator, contract part time seventeen point five hours per week, at a cost of twenty-six thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars per year, utilizing the hundred percent provincial Ministry of Health and Long-Term Care funding. And Warden, Mr. Anderson's unable to be here today, but we have Mrs. Mulville here, and between her and I, we'll try that for any questions taken with the by now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Over, just wait. Present, I can be submitted by myself, as Chair, and committee members Campbell, Eman, Rabashaw, Shulis, Stewart, Thompson, and Whitaker.
Thank you. Council members, comments, questions, concerns, item number one? Item two? Item three? Four? Five? Item number eight? Report as a whole. Mover, please. Aye, so move. Thank you. You've heard the report and the motion, council, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? None is carried. Bylaws?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Moved by myself and seconded by Norm Lentz, that the bylaws listed on item eleven, and attached here too is Schedule Eight on the county council agenda dated November twenty-six, 2014, be deemed read three times and passed.
Thank you. You've heard the motion, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None is carried. Notes of motions? Members' written motions? Do business. Mayor Thompson, then Shulis, and then business, you want?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and with your indulgence and the indulgence of the members present, I was going to take a few minutes of your time. I first served as a municipal councillor back in nineteen eighty-five. My guess is my seatmate was probably thirty-eight or something back then. And in nineteen eighty-eight, I served as a county councillor, and at the age of twenty-eight, I was the youngest to ever come and join these chambers, and I think that's a record that still holds to this day. And back then, I had the honor of serving with Janice, and Audrey, and Jack, back in the, we were all over the old county building. Of course, it's very, very social. I remember all the old timers coming up to shake my hand, and they kind of looked down and discussed, because these were hardworking men by and large, and missing a couple of digits, and they weren't very impressed with my pretty boy hands that didn't have a callus on them. And I sat in the back row, which I think is a bit of a theme. And I sat in the back row, which I think is a bit of a theme, because this is where they put me again this time. I remember during the verbatim reading of the Roads and Bridges Report, which was often running about thirty pages long, I would sit beside the Reva Condon and Dave Stewart. And we thought that this would be a hell of a good time to head out across the street to the Legion, and we would often indulge in a jug of beer, and get back in time, just as the report was being finished. And we were hoping that the press wouldn't notice, but as it turned out, they were already there. There were at least one jug of beer ahead of us. During those years, I had the opportunity to work with Dave Anderson when he had hair, and Jim Ketchy when your hair was just a tad darker. Jim still marvels at my all-time record of losing the most consecutive recorded votes, thirty-five to one. And I think that's a reputable stat for a while. I remember when my term of office ended, I was approached by the Reva Barn Primo, Henry Burdon. And he came over and he shook my hand, and he wished me the very best of luck in my future political career, which I thought was kind of an interesting thing to say, because we were just wrapping up. But Henry was a very thoughtful and obviously had a prescient sense of, and as here we are finishing up another four-year term. This time, however, there will be no phoenix rising from the ashes. My political career has come to a close, and it is now time to pursue other opportunities. I consider this room to be hallowed ground. I dispel with respect, and is guided by the principles of fair debate. I have the absolute utmost respect for our staff. The residents of Redford County have no idea how fortunate they are. Now, I'm like Dave Shulis, and I'm a little bit biased. I happen to think that the staff in the town of Deep River might be the very best going, but a very close second at the staff here in Redford County. And it's really, it truly has been my honor to be associated with them. And I feel the same way about the elected. There's a saying that the voters are never wrong. Well, I disagree. Because if the electorate had even an inkling of the dedication and effort of these people in this room, eleven incumbents would not be walking out the door this afternoon for the final time. We will leave with our heads held high, in the full knowledge that we made the very best contribution possible. And I am absolutely a better person for having known you. When I was first elected, there was thirty-six municipalities in the county of Redford. And today, we have eighteen, including Pembroke. Eighteen municipalities to serve just over 101,000 residents, the size of a small city. That is not a sustainable business model. We have eighteen councils, eighteen CAOs, eighteen treasurers, eighteen public works foremen, eighteen recreation leaders, eighteen accounts payable clerks, eighteen town halls, just for 100,000 residents. If we were starting from scratch, we would never have considered such a system. And I do not buy the argument that there is an urban rural divide, or a divide between Highway Seventeen communities and those in the heart of the county. We are all the same. It is the boundaries drawn in the sand that are dilutionary. We all face the same issues, no matter where we live. Be they waste management, fire protection, road maintenance, police protection, recreation facilities, library services. I feel sorry for the city of Pembroke. I've had an opportunity to spend some time with Mayor Jack. These folks are landlocked, their ability to grow revenues is going to be very difficult. And yet, their operational costs continue to soar. Pembroke shoulders an unfair burden of our social services cost and our homes for the aged cost. The city of Pembroke absolutely must be invited back to join the county. The system we currently have, and we currently utilize, has inherent duplication, and it creates other issues. We have fee disputes between municipalities who host recreation facilities and adjoining residents who use them. We have the inefficient distribution of firefighting equipment. Some municipalities are excited to see the exorbitant increases in policing costs. We have complicated cost-sharing agreements for landfill operations. And we have artificial boundaries that affect snow clearing operations. Yet here at the county, at this level, there are so many different services that the county provides to the lower tier. The provision of paramedic services. The provision of planning and development services. Economic and development and tourism marketing. Human resources, forest management, social services, housing services, Ontario Works, childcare services, county roads, Miermashi Lodge, Volta Manor, these are all different aspects that the county provides. And I truly believe the time is right for the upper-tier county to take on a significantly more substantial role. If the county can provide regional paramedic service, why not police service or fire service? The consolidation of equipment and personnel, by definition, would provide a broader range of coverage by more experienced staff, all at a reduced cost. If the county can take responsibility for the care and maintenance of county roads, why not all roads? Where is the fairness of one municipality subsidizing the operation of a swimming pool and arena, when residents of the adjacent municipality get to use those facilities without paying any of the capital costs? Where is the fairness of some municipalities getting huge payments in lieu for government operations, like Canadian nuclear laboratories, garrisons at the Wawa, dams or pipelines, based solely on some arbitrary line drawn on a map? Wouldn't all county residents benefit if these revenues were shared equally? Why do we need to go through the environmental assessment nightmare to locate multiple landfill sites, when as a county, we probably only require a couple? Wouldn't the pickup of garbage and recycling materials be completed more efficiently and cost effectively if provided by a single contractor? And who is going to get a better price when procuring goods and services? A small enclave of three hundred residents, or a county of 100,000 residents? The status quo is not sustainable. In the not-too-distant future, you will witness municipalities in the county of Redford rack up unmanageable debt. They will be forced to make significant reductions in the level of service provided. They will have to raise user fees that will ultimately be an outrage of the average citizen. Or they will have to resort to skyrocketing property tax increases. You can fully expect to see a revolt from local taxpayers, and rightly so. We have assembled in this very room some of the brightest minds in the county. We cannot sit idly by when we know the storm clouds are approaching. We must be proactive and start to transition to this change now, or we can wait until the inevitable happens and the changes are forced upon us. We would all be better served by creating our own destiny. So, Mr. Warden, I appeal to you to strike an ad hoc committee at your inaugural meeting on December 16th, to examine the benefits of the consolidation of the delivery of goods and services at the county level. The committee should consist of the elected, the staff, and community leaders, whose initials may or may not include DVT. With respect, thank you.
Thank you, all these thoughtful and fond inducing... Thank you, Mayor Thompson, Shulis, and Visneski Ward.
All right. I don't think I'm going to beat that one. Mr. Warden, if it's okay, could I use the podium just for...
Sure.
...it's not going to take all that long, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, for letting me speak here. I did end up putting something on everyone's desk here. I think it's just sort of a good news story. It is a municipality overseas in Keshewi that has asked us to twin with the township of Madawaska Valley. And I'm going to read this proposal by Lipush Township. Now, the word Gamenia on top is actually the word township in the Keshewian language. So, I'm going to read it here. "In consideration of the common past connecting the communities of the inhabitants of Lipush and Madawaska Valley, as well as the present-day contacts, language, culture, and heritage, we would like to take steps to establish a formal partner relations between our communities. Establishing partners' relations, we would like to strengthen Canadian Keshew's bonds with Keshewi, the home and native land of their ancestors, and promote cultivation of the Keshewian language and custom. It is also our intent to strengthen the Keshewian identity of inhabitants of Lipush and Madawaska Valley. We believe that establishing cooperation will allow our communities to get to know each other better and share our experiences in cultivating the Keshewian culture, as well as promoting our small homelands. Therefore, I make an appeal to the Council of Lipush and Madawaska Valley to pass appropriate resolutions aimed at establishing formal partners' relations between our communities." And it was signed by Mayor Slav Ibarowski. And this was done on October 14th. And what's really amazing is that a lot of times, twinning is something that comes up in friendship and so on. But this twinning actually means a lot, because it is one of the communities that most of us Keshews in Redford County are connected to. I know even sitting at this table here, I'm going to say Mayor Visneski, not the Visneski name, but Utrunki, her mother, is connected to the township of Lipush, which there is eight communities. We have Rose Gruntz, who is Utrunki. And also Reeve Audrey Green, who is a prince, is connected to this community. And we have a staff member, Connie Wilson, who is connected to Ed Manskys and Coolises that are connected to the township of Lipush. And of course, Shulis and that. So, I do have to let you know is that we did end up doing a resolution, that we're going to twin with the township of Lipush. And also, in the letter here, it says Keshewi, the home and native land of our ancestors. And all this time, through my lifetime, I always thought that Poland was the home and native land of my Keshewian ancestors, which is not true. It is Keshewi. One thing we have done too, because we are going to end up putting a package together and sending it over to Lipush. And we have created a map, we have created a map here, and sort of a twinning map, as we call it. We do have the Keshew nation here of Keshewi. And circled here is where Lipush is. And of course, we have to use the Redford County map. And we are circling the Madawaska Valley, which is the heartland of where the Keshews had settled in 1858. So, again, Gamenia is the township, and we used also the Keshewian name here. And I would like to present this to the Warden, if that would be okay for you, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much, David. And Mayor Visneski Ward.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I just want to take a minute. With the departure of Mayor Wilson, I will be the longest sitting county councillor. In Dave's remarks a little bit earlier, I heard my name, and I was sitting here, I was elected in 1985 as well. And I've enjoyed working with a lot of members of County Council. I just want to say thank you to Jack, and Donnie, and Dick, and David, and Mary, and David, and Tammy, and Norm.
And Don.
And Rayanne, isn't here, and Audrey. I enjoyed working with all of you. It's a sad day for me when I have to say goodbye to people that I've enjoyed working with. Donnie, you sat as Warden, you gave me an opportunity to sit as Chair, and I want to thank you for that. You were a great Warden. I don't know how many times I've told Donnie that he's such a gentleman, and he was a gentleman to his whole tenure. He was very good to us, and helped each one of us develop and grow. Jack, you and I have worked together for a long time. Jack was the seconder of my motion to become Warden. And Jack and I like to tease each other. I'm going to miss that teasing, Jack. Who else is going to call me stupid and all the things that you did over the years? Okay, Jennifer's taking over. But I've enjoyed working with you as well. Dick, you sat on the committee. David, you sat on the committee with me. Mary, you sat on the committee with me. And Tammy, you were my vice-chair. And Norm, you were on the committee with me. You know, you're great people, I'm sorry to see you go. I know the door has closed, but another door will open. So, to all of you, thank you for helping me grow in this job. Thank you for being supportive of my efforts, and I wish you all the best in what you're going to do. Now, Dave, before, I can't not comment on Dave Thompson's comments. I probably disagree with ninety-five percent of it, but I think the world of you, David, and I enjoyed working with you. And I do wish you the best in all the efforts that you... You said another door is opening for you, and more challenges, and good luck with those. Mr. Eadie, you're going to be taking over as the Mayor of Ramford, so I offer you the best. And of course, Rayanne and I have been friends for many years. She helped me through some tough times in my personal life, and I won't forget that. And for Jennifer, and Bob, and Peter, and me, and Walter, the five of us are going to be here to carry on, and we definitely will try to keep conscious of the comments that were made today. We know that this is the best county in Ontario. We know that we have huge challenges ahead of us. And Jack, if you're sitting in the back, we'll always welcome your comments. He's always got a good take on what should be and what shouldn't be. So, again, my congratulations. I now want to say goodbye. Congratulations to all of you for the hard work that you've done for this place. It was, it won't be forgotten. And I want to say goodbye to you as colleagues, but I also want to say goodbye, because you 've all been my friends. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lisa.
Yeah, thank you. I certainly want to extend my best wishes to the twelve incoming members of County Council. It's been great working with them, and they've been great council. I also want to extend a welcome, when we're here next month, to the twelve incoming members of the new County Council, and offer them all the support and help that I can be to them at any time. But on a personal note, I can't let... I'm in municipal politics now all nine years, and if somebody said to me earlier, I almost get to be on the senior list here, but, you know, I know what it's like. In 2003, I ran and lost, and I was appointed in 2005, when one of our council members resigned. And then in 2006, for reasons that there's no need to get into today, I decided to run for Revenon, where I come to County Council. And I was acclaimed, which was a bit of a surprise, but anyways, it happened. And then all of a sudden, the reality set in. And to be quite honest, you're a little nervous about coming here, I wasn't at all familiar. So, through mutual friends, and I have to offer a personal thank you to Jack Wilson. Through mutual friends, we got introduced. And Jack met me for breakfast one morning at Irving Big Stop, and we come over here and spent the day. He talked to me about councilman's operations, and took me down to the health unit and around, and introduced me. So, Jack, nine years is a big difference from fifty, but I want you to know, I really appreciated that day, and would be remiss for me not to say thank you today.
I'm a little offended, Walter, you didn't remember that I mentioned it's in Patrick's Day and talked to you about that.
You only ever say Patrick's Day, you understand why I didn't remember.
Sorry, sorry, Mr. Warden. I forgot to mention Harold Ruckert, and he's one of my neighbors, and because he had accident the building, I too, I enjoyed working with him. We were good neighbors, and I'm going to miss his face as well. And I also forgot to mention you, Mr. Warden. You are a wonderful Warden. You've served us well at the county of Ramford. You've given me an opportunity to sit as Chair and to work closely with you. I look forward to working with you. I hear you're running again, so I look forward to working with you as Warden again. And congratulations to you on your election. And keep... congratulations to you on your election, and keep up the good work. You serve us well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Murphy, please.
I'm trying to stay very calm while I do this. As the surviving member of Chetan Adiva, I'm not sure, did I break for a record, I'm from a junior member to a senior member in four years? I'm not sure.
January third at three in the morning.
I, you know, obviously, I've never been in municipal politics or any level of government, and coming here was a very, very scary and humbling experience. And I just, I want to thank all of you that mentored me and helped me through, especially that first year. It was such a learning curve at my own council. And to come here and find the amount of respect between not only the elected, but the staff, and how you grow, not only as friends, but as a family, and I'm going to miss you so much. And I do hope that, like Mayor Wilson, other people come back and keep their eye on us, right? So, thank you, especially to Don. Thank you, Don.
Now, I know Mayor Murphy's very confused and wants to know who's been messing with the chair.
I want to know who's been messing with my chair.
Apparently, when she came into meetings to sit in her chair, it was always raised up, and I think it's just a natural reset for the chair, but that's only my opinion.
Well, thank you very much, Warden. Sounds as though I may be the antenna pattern here for the situation.
The sweeper.
Pardon me?
The sweeper.
The sweeper, or whatever the term is. Yeah, it's nice to see you finally arrived as an old lady here.
My girl.
As a senior member. But, yeah, seriously, you know, I've been around here since the year two thousand, and so many of the county's sat in the chair up there where the warden is a number of times. I want to thank all of those who supported me in doing the things that we had to do. And I look back over the last, this term, and one of the real special occasions that we had here is, and I think it speaks to the very essence of who and what the people of Ranford County are, and that's the one hundred and fiftieth anniversary, which took place in two thousand and eleven. Tremendous celebration, a wonderful group of individuals who cooperated immensely and supported me when I was the chair. Donnie gave me that job to be the chair, and I said yes. Somewhere along the line, I've got to learn to say no, because that was a huge undertaking, but would not have been possible without the team that's sitting around here taking that forward. Nice to know that our CEO, it's always been another job, because he led the parking group there directing traffic on the side of the airport. There was a great celebration, but it really speaks to the quality of the individuals who are sitting around the table and the willingness to make it happen. I've been with the team for the last little while, and we're working on a very special project, and that's the CP rail line. I'm sure it'll come to fruition. The table will put up work, but to each and every one, we have four, for what you did for the county, what you did to support myself. And I watched the photograph there, and I noticed that the shoulders just rose about three inches when the photo was getting taken. So, sigh of relief, I guess, I suppose. I don't know whether you're the smart ones or we are, there's a lot behind, but it's also nice to see that the new group coming in here, we want to welcome them, obviously, and we look forward to working with the team and bringing them up to speed on the many, many issues that are in place here in the county of Ranford. I too would suggest to Mayor Shulis, that I know he suggested Madawale was the center of the county, when we all know, in fact, it's the Wawa.
It's Bonnershire Valley.
And Bonnershire Valley is, well, it's a tie anyway. It's fun that we've been able to share some fun, and it's been an exciting time here. So, Mr. Warden, good luck going forward with your nomination. And to those, yeah, it's going to be a little bit different around at the council chamber against people who have to be game tags, because there's a lot of folks that we haven't met for a long while for the first time. Thank you again to each and every one of you, the warden who gave me, and as I've said numerous times, one door closes, another one opens, so good luck each and every one of you. We love you, Shulis. I know David's got my telephone number on his... That was a little time ago, but anyway, she gave me a wink there, maybe she does. Anyway, good luck each and every one of you. It's been a pleasure working with you for the last fourteen years.
Thank you. With that, we'll turn to Mr. Hutton, and then we'll turn to Mayor Ratchell.
Thank you very much, Warden. Members of county council, certainly on behalf of staff, I just want to thank you to every one of you of the past four years. We've worked very closely with you. Municipal, municipal world, there are always some bumps, but we've gone along, we've gone along very well, we've accomplished a lot of things over the years, our strategic plan, as we mentioned, Act One Fifty, numerous reports belonging to the province. I have to say, I thank you for the respect that you've given me and my staff. You are my first council or CAO, and I have to say it's been a good ride for me the last four years. Warden, former Warden Raffel was my first warden. As Mayor Visneski mentioned, he is a gentleman, and he made it easy for me, followed up by former Warden Mayor Sweetland, now Warden Evilso. I just want to say thank you. Rose, you were going to put something up on the screen for me. Mayor Sweetland does this at our staff, in terms of our service awards. Two hundred and fifty-five years of service, close twelve outgoing members to our communities in the county of Ranford, that's a lot. I know we have Mayor Wilson at fifty, he leads the way. Also Reeve Green at thirty-six years, Reeve Lentz at forty-one years, and Reeve Raffel at thirty-two. So, each and every one of you have made the county a better place, you've made the organization a better organization, you have made all our communities better communities for the county. So, thanks, and I do agree with the sentiment, we're one of the best counties in Ontario. Thank you very much, and good luck.
Mayor Ratchell, please.
We'll save that for later. Oh, we'll save that for later. What I'd like to do then is we're going to break for lunch, and I'd like everybody back about ten to one. But prior to breaking for lunch, if we could, if you could undrape your t-shirts, and we'll take a picture with the tagline, show them, please.
Please be seated. And as we ramble through the agenda, we'll ramble over to Mayor Ratchell.
I'm going to come up to the front here and bring in Mayor Wilson with me to help do this presentation. Peter, I'd like to get you to come up with us.
I know.
So, I'll often say a few words. I got to nominate this guy a second time around, it was my pleasure. I've looked after the last couple of years that I've worked under Peter, he's done an excellent job. I'm proud of your confidence. When I talk to people in town, your name comes up. You're doing a good job. I want to congratulate you. And so, on behalf of myself, thank you very much for the great... Jack.
Yeah, I've known Peter long before he came to the county, and he's been a great friend of mine, I think, over the years, and maybe we had some differences somewhere along the road, but not too many, other than down in Tennessee, maybe, or something. But anyway...
Am I driving?
Anyway, it's been great working with Peter over the years, and I'd like to wish him best luck in another year. Warden, you've done a great job in the past, and there's been an honor to work for you.
Thank you. I often say that the warden serves at the pleasure of county council, and that's true in two ways. One is in stature of pleasure, and it's certainly been my pleasure. We've accomplished so much in just being for Bob in his two years, and then also in these two years as a group. I can't say that I've had a terrible time or a difficult day. It's been great. Everything's been so accommodating, good ideas, good discussion, polite, respectful. There's no negatives on this, and so, thank you very much. It's been a real pleasure and a joy, and it's challenging and complex, but it's not complicated, and it's not undoable. You know, with Jack as the acting warden, it was a real great experience for me to talk to him, to share ideas, just to, you know, laugh about things, and have him show up on behalf of the county as a full well, that, you know, he would never make a misstep, that's just not going to be a... So, very fortunate to have that support, the support of all the chairs, and the information that they guided through their agendas and brought forward, very helpful to me and to most definitely to the county. So, I can't offer any words of wisdom, because they've all come through the chairs on a regular basis and through these chambers. So, thank you very much, and I really appreciate your support, your effort, your energy, your ideas, your friendship, and your ability to keep a confidence when it's necessary. So, thank you. And maybe it's a little early, but Merry Christmas, and those of you who are coming back, we'll make sure we see you en route, and please, please make sure you keep in contact. All right, thank you. With that, we'd like to move to closed to discuss litigation, potential litigation type relationships, security with the prime one, number... Denfible, yeah, sorry. We'd like to discuss denfible information about individual... Confirmatory bylaw, please.
Moved by myself, seconded by Norm Lentz, that a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council of the county of Ranford at the meeting held on November twenty-six, two thousand and fourteen, be now numbered, deemed, read three times and passed. Bylaw number one oh six dash fourteen.
You've heard the motion, discussion. All who was in favor, opposed, not as carried, can you cancel? And Mayor Wilson, would you ask for and receive the last motion, please?
I would so.
You can ask it, you have to ask it.
Move it.
Can I vote for adjourned?
You certainly can. Second bylaws, please.
Everybody seconded.
Thank you very much, everyone.